We don't have a really big agenda today. If we can break our records from what's the last week?
I don't know. If you get out of here by five, that would be interesting.
We've got one. It's not available. We aren't going to do it. There were some problems, so they're not coming.
You gotta wait until Tom's here.
Oh, let's see. 4:28. 4:29.
Karen's gonna be here today.
She is gonna be logged in electronically.
No one's heard from Jake?
No, sir.
Now, what are you doing here, Swarthy?
I know. It's just not something abnormal about it.
Jake just texted me and said he thought he let me know he wouldn't be attending, but realized he never hit send, so he won't be here tonight.
So are we gonna delay that again?
Your call, Mayor.
I think he's the driving force behind it. Well, it's time to start. So we call to order the study meeting in the West Valley City Council. We note that we have a quorum present. We have six council members participating tonight. Councilman Jake Pitisimano will be excused tonight. With that then, and we probably have people electronically online listening in, but we'll go next on our agenda to our minutes of July 20th. Motion and a second on the minutes, either as is or modified.
We'll approve the minutes of July 20th, second.
Properly for us. There are no further comments then, without objection. Our minutes will be approved. There were no objections, so it's unanimous. And I'll continue to do that whenever we have someone on electronic, meaning hearing no objections. Let's see. Then reviewing our agenda for our regular meeting tonight, you all should have gotten notification of the additional items, supporting documents for some changes to the item on the agenda from Marco Diaz. Any questions on those? Nope, okay. Then, new business scheduled for later tonight, and this is a change to our agenda for tonight, and I didn't ask about that because we're gonna talk about it here, is the awarding a contract Oakland Construction for the Utah Veterans Memorial Park. I guess that must be Resolution 21-138.
Yes, sir. So if I may introduce her, okay.
Before you begin, I will not be saying anything. This is a contract where it could be very easily and is a conflict of interest since I have raised funds for this project. And so I'm gonna probably say very little. Mr. Pyle is going to take that. I'd be happy to answer questions, but I want to publicly disclose that for the record. So with that, Mr. Pyle.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So council, as you all know and are aware and remember, we've had a lot of work going into trying to get this project off the ground, get funds raised, get a design, get a place located. Those are all, I would call it around 95% set now. We've got the place, we have significant funding, we have a proposed contract, we have a contractor, Oakland, who's worked very well with us. And one of the pieces that falls maybe in that 5% variability is construction costs keep rising like almost on a weekly basis, causing us some issues in trying to get a contract nailed down. Hence, we do have a guaranteed maximum price proposed contract from Oakland, and it actually is $1.6 million, not the $1.3 million that we're asking for here in the issue paper. The $1.3 million reflects the actual revenue that we have. $1.6 million, the gap in there in between will be taken care of one of two ways. We're even, even as of today, I was meeting with Jake whittling down some other numbers at a kind of a marginal level that would drop that deficit even further and we'll continue to work that. At the same time, if we have, we have some elements of that project that if we had to delay to the second phase and couldn't raise the difference and we're limited to the $1.3, we'd be able to stop and complete the Phase One essential portions of the project by this fall. Now normally what we would do is say, yeah, no, we don't want to do that. We want to get this thing completely bid, nailed, and then executed. Unfortunately, as I mentioned, because the construction costs continue to rise, we need to get this done so we can move ahead and get this portion of it accomplished. So to that end, like I said, we have a GMP estimate and contract to bring before you for the $1.3, and that's what we're proposing both for study meeting tonight and for approval in the regular meeting tonight, hence why it's an added item. As far as that gap in between the 361, if you'd like to detail what that is, I can have Jake come up and talk about that, also how we're proposing to take care of that piece. I might also add, although it's not included in the issue paper or the contract, we already do have other pieces of what I would call semi-committed funding to go move into Phase Two. And if we can nail that down in the next few weeks, we would either, construction season-wise, either delay that till formal Phase Two or we might even addendum contract that into the, not change order, but an addendum to the contract and add that portion into the current year's construction. That's actually what I would hope for. Don't know if we're gonna be able to accomplish that or not yet, but we're working on that even as we speak too. So I'm kinda giving you a bunch of overview vision of what we're trying to accomplish, where we're at, but the item before you tonight really is just authorizing us to expend the $1.3. So with that, if there are questions as to the specifics of the contract, I'll have Jake come up, or if there's more general contracts or general questions on the contract, we can talk about that as well.
So the $1.6, will that complete Phase One?
Yes.
Okay. When we've seen different renderings and things, I'm trying to remember what Phase One is.
Yeah.
What's the timeline on that?
So the timeline would still be, if we can approve this now, we can still get this constructed and completed in this construction year. The stated date is Veterans Day because we'd like to have a ribbon-cutting, you know, dedication ceremony on that date. It's pretty aggressive, hence again why I want to get this going and get it knocked out. As far as the elevations go, and kinda reminding you what it actually is included in Phase One, we can show that as well. Jake has that information, right?
I would make the comment that I reviewed with Mr. Pyle and Jake, you know, these costs, and there are items that can be reasonably held, and I'm comfortable that they can, you know, do a project for the $1.3 million. The items that were left out, I didn't think were extremely critical. And I mean, we want to still do them, but those are things that we can add later without too much problem.
Right. We can either delay to a Phase Two or we can complete them if we find some more resources or reduce them. But to give you some clear idea on that, while Jake's gonna show the elevations anyway, we'll have him talk about what those variables are and which we've got some room to maneuver, so you've got a clearer idea of what we're talking about.
I'm just thinking if we had worked a little bit harder and longer at the groundbreaking, we could have saved some money.
We could have saved, I don't know, a hundred bucks, maybe a thousand if enough of us were there with shovels and smoothing. Blown it all right back, yeah. That's probably true, too.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jake Arslanian, Construction Manager for the city. As our IT guru is putting the actual slideshow up on the screen, the $1.61 million was the current actual bid as of last week when Oakland received all of their subs bids. So we're going one week at a time, unfortunately. So our goal is to narrow the gap down. So some of the cost was, we were able to defer to future phases, which is the stones. The stone benches, there is about 33 of them in the project that constitute about $120,014. So what we did, Mayor and I and Wayne talked about this, so we pulled that out. So that also becomes an avenue for the mayor to, so to speak, sell benches. And as we sell them, it would cost us about $3,800, but we could sell them for 10 grand. So by doing so, we will pick up that gap. And Oakland was very gracious to drop their fee, zero fee. They're building this with zero income on their part. And the other option we also had at Oakland, and EDA and I worked on it last Friday, to reduce their overhead, so to speak. So the project is about six months long project. So the four months is to finish it by November 11th. That's still our goal. But the remainder of the stuff is the punch list items, and because we're planting trees and shrubs so late, we want to get back into spring and make sure that all those items lived and have the subcontractor replace them or what have you. So what Oakland did, reducing that six-months project to four and a half months, they took another $80,000 off the table. So we're narrowing the gap. So as we go, as I talked to Wayne this morning as well, I talked to Oakland this morning saying we still need to narrow it any, you know, a little further. And their promise was that during the process of construction, there will be some more reductions hopefully, and they'll pass all of those to us. The one thing that I couldn't take away from the project is the contractor always have some funds in there for unknown items. And there is another $28,000 that Oakland, if we don't use it, they could reduce our cost down. So all of that is plus to us. But in order for us to meet November 11th, the Veterans Day grand opening celebrations, we needed to start this week. I mean, we needed to start a month ago, but we're pushing the envelope.
I would say on that, perhaps more important than that is that we sign the contract soon.
Yes, hopefully tomorrow or the next day. As soon as, that's why I'm sorry to bring something so quickly to you and put Mr. Pyle into a circumstance where we have to study it and vote on it the same day. I usually don't like to do that, but the time is ticking, and that's why we're at this point. And we would like to have a contract signed by Oakland tomorrow. And notice to proceed, we'll go at the same time we're signing the contract so that they could roll. They're very committed. They're very patriotic about this, and they wanted to be very much involved in making this happen. Did I talk long enough, sir?
Well, it's not like we haven't heard of this before. I mean, usually we.
Right.
And apparently.
Here we go. Maybe.
Great. Can we make that into a presentation, please? Slideshow, thank you.
I think you wanted to see the memorial itself.
Well, I just want to know what Phase One is with this contract.
Okay, so can you go to the next slide, please? Phase Two, you've seen it before, which was the two buildings. No, just one back, please. So Phase Two is the completed parking lot that you see to the way. Okay, the top of the picture is north, the bottom is south, west, and east. West part of the parking lot, which completes the amount of stalls that we need for this development. And the two buildings was Phase Two. That's about $10 million. So if you go back forward, actually, that would give us. Okay, so this is Phase One. You see the difference. There is no trees, no additional parking, no entrance elaborating that this is Veterans Memorial Park. There is no buildings to the east end of the project. And what you see in that pale green will be Utah native grasses. So it's not even actual grass. So, and there are slinging terms, it'll be weeds, but they're Utah native grasses. So what you see in the middle is few parking stalls for regular vehicles, and there is four ADA parking stalls. The rest was going to be with some signage saying, please park at the cultural center or down below at the county's parking lot for the Jordan River Parkway. And they'll come up the hill, come across the road, which Public Works approved, that crosswalk, and come in here. So the center portion and the few stalls will finish what Phase One is supposed to be. So Phase Two will be the additional parking, the buildings, and the surrounding of the property. There's some more landscaping to the south. So as you could see, our goal for Phase One, minus the two building, is to have the entire parking lot in there, the shrubbery, the trees, a nice little marquee that says this is the entrance to the Utah Veterans Memorial Park. All of those are missing from Phase One B, so to speak. But Phase One will be complete, and it would stand on its own with that $1.61 million.
So Phase One includes actual memorial, the names?
Yes. If you would go, please, Eric. So go, okay. One more? Thank you. Phase One, it would look like this. You would have the memorial wall, you would have the American flags welcoming you to the memorial. It would have all of the sidewalk concrete, all of the elements. Next picture, please. All of the elements that complete Phase One. And the memorial, obviously, the front end is the actual name. The back end of the memorial is all the names. And the mayor has given me a number of the amount of names that will be etched on this memorial. So there's World War I, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, and War on Terror that happened from Desert Storm till now. So there is approximately 2,900 names that's gonna be etched on this wall. The wall itself is about 90 feet long. Each section will have approximately 400 names. So in each section, and by the way, this is the same stone that we have on our police building. It's sandstone that comes from a quarry up in Heber, and Delta Stone, which did, our building here, will be doing this project as well. So there's three elements on the memorial. The upper portion, which is two feet by five feet, that's where we will name the war. Then the middle section, that is four feet by five feet, then the bottom section so that it completes the picture look. So each one of those center sections as well, they are pieces of two by five. So you don't have to take the entire four-foot panel to go and re-edge new names. So the, let's say, 3,000 names, it would leave us approximately four and a half panels for future add-ons. So in each one of those names, we are trying to depict the same size of letters that are on the Vietnam Memorial. They're a little bit bigger than 5/8 inch. So you could see it from approximately six or seven feet. You could see the name very well, but you could come to it and edge or whatever so that, because people will be doing that. Next picture, please. Thank you. The center of the memorial, behind the memorial, the park that I'm calling it, it has the benches, as you could see, and there is a monolith that looks like Utah. It's the Utah map. One more picture, please. It looks like a Utah map. It has the Great Salt Lake actually bored out and the Utah Lake. And we are trying to depict Utah Narrows. So these are actually, when you look inside of the two sides, there are carvings that would match almost what the Narrows look like. And the water feature that you see, which doesn't have a water feature, but it's the river that went through the Narrows. So we're trying to make it Utah memorial with all Utah products as possible. And you see to your left of the, my left, to the right of the plaza, that's where the monument is, and there will be benches in front of it as well. The next picture, please. So that's what you see, the monument behind you. One more picture, please. So behind there, behind the trees, right on that corner, is the Armed Forces Flags with monuments in front of them, given a little history. So we have Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine, Coast Guard, and Space something.
Space Force.
Space Force, thank you. That's new to me, but I guess we don't want to offend anybody. The architects were saying that it's important to put up. So one more picture, please.
They don't mention the Merchant Marine anymore.
They don't. Well, Merchant Marines, really, they were not in the Armed Forces, so to speak, what I studied. So when you look at, now you're looking east. So the memorial is behind you, and you're looking east at that beautiful vista. Because if you recall, the upper portion where we're putting this is about nine to 10 feet higher than the ground below where the canal went. So there's nothing to obstruct the view to the east. And all those flags, the military flags, will be there. So whenever you have a ceremony or whatnot, there's plenty of space for you to make the ceremonies, to put wreaths or what have you. So this is, is there a couple more pictures? Or I think this is it. So in reality, that's what it's gonna look like. And those are the stones, the benches that we, we, the mayor, will be starting to sell to make the project complete.
Okay, thanks. That answers that question. Since this is a Utah memorial, are we starting with 1896 remembrances? Or are we starting with World War I?
The immediate portion is World War I forward because those are the records we have. Those are, by comparison, relatively easy. We know the data's there. They just have to get it out for us. Prior to World War I, it will be based not necessarily upon existing records like that at the Department of Veterans Military Affairs. We're going to have to go back to the Historical Department of the state. We're going to have to go back into written records, rather, you know, anecdotal-type things to see if we can identify who those are. That will probably be an ongoing project that will take, you know, that we'll add names as we find them.
As I mentioned, Councilman, there is another four panels to do whatever the council wishes or desires.
We probably ought to have a start date if somebody lived here in the 1860s and went and fought in the Civil War. Are we including them? Are we only including from when we were a state? And I'm just causing problems.
That's not clearly defined. And part of the reason for that, for example, is the Civil War, which was before we were a state. There's actually a monument on the state Capitol grounds. In fact, if you look in the southwest corner, there was one individual that was verified that was living here.
That died in the Civil War.
Went back, died in the Civil War. Now there are others who died, you know, that are buried here in Utah during the Civil War, but they weren't.
They didn't come from here.
I'd like to throw something in, Councilman Buehler. There is 2,945 names. And the mayor and I are still working very hard in getting those names. And if the names don't show up by mid-August or first of September, the memorial will be complete without names. And but as I mentioned before, we could take them down and edge them in. Because there's World War II, World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and current conflicts. I'm not sure why they're not able to give us those names so quick.
The only other thing I'd mention is that Merchant Marines that served in World War II were made veterans by act of Congress. Other Merchant Marines that did not serve in World War II are not considered veterans. I don't know if we had any that passed away, but I assume we did since per capita, they lost more than any other branch of the service.
So in reality, the most names on this wall will be from World War II. There is 1,822 names. I'm not sure the dates of that.
Well, it sounds like an ongoing project, and it's good to get some shovels on the ground and get going. I'll take more questions for another time.
Thank you.
And so you're aware, will I continue fundraising? And the answer is yes. Actually, still continuing to set up appointments and talk to people. And I'll even continue the golf tournament. Nothing else? No further questions, and we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which are the public hearings scheduled for next, our next meeting in two weeks. I actually caught it before. You did this time.
Amen.
Will be a public hearing for our annual budget. Will be Resolution 21-139. That'll be for fiscal year that we just started, July 1st through June 30th of next year. And this is the budget that we've been talking about. And so if you have questions. Jim is here, yeah. I saw him earlier. But there isn't a specific presentation at this point. There will be one next week for the benefit of the public.
Two weeks.
Next, yeah. Next, yeah.
Next move.
How soon did I forget?
This includes the judgment levy, $43,000. Isn't that about half of what it usually is?
It varies a lot year to year. This is a smaller year. $40,000 is a lower amount, but it's not uncommon. We've seen it there before.
Hearing, no comments? Okay. We'll move on to the next item, our consent agenda. Two more resolutions, 21-140 and 141, again on the 4,700 South project. These are out, actually, in my neighborhood, on Lemonwood and Eaglewood Drive, Lemonwood Circle. And these are all properties that are rear-facing to the street, 4,700 South. The circle, those could be side yards, because the circle goes right up to the fence on 4,700 South. But they are, all of them, for that project. You know, the traditional easement, temporary construction easement, real estate purchase and public utility easement, those kinds of things. Unless you need more information on them, why, that's what we have. Not hearing anything, then we'll go to our communications. Healthy West Valley, given the high interest that Councilman Fitissimano has on this, I would suggest postponing that unless the council wants to address it tonight.
I agree, we should postpone it.
Okay. Not hearing anything. We will reschedule that for two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks. Don't do it next week. I'll probably show up, but don't do it then anyway.
Okay.
Unless Nicole or someone calls and reminds me. Then the fire ladder truck display will also be postponed because there were some issues. They will not be able to bring that ladder truck here tonight.
Is this a new truck?
New truck. And it's got some, we got it in the shop making some last-minute minor modifications, which we thought would be done, but they're not done.
Okay.
What's that?
New engine or what?
Oh, yeah, it was minor modification. A new engine, yes.
Okay. Then we go to our council calendar. Any questions there? Hearing none.
We've got a new...
Oh.
...printout for the...
Neighborhood Night Out.
Neighborhood Night Out.
Okay, I hadn't checked my emails. I know some of you want to go to every one of them, but... Not me. Okay. Potential future agenda items. Anything that anyone wants to bring up?
This is kind of a report and an agenda.
Okay.
Yesterday, as I was sitting at the UCCC with 50 friends watching the concert and thinking, you know, people just don't know about this. We brought a couple who's lived here as long as we have. They never heard of such a thing. And I was thinking about the Sandy Ampli Theater, and they have that electronic marquee right on 13th East, always telling what's going on. I thought, well, maybe if we did something like that. We've done something similar already on 56th West with the fitness center. But if we brought that out to 33rd, 35th South, whatever that is, and just advertised what's going to be at the Cultural Center, we're probably talking similar money to what we spent out on 56th.
Now, I know that the city's talked about that, and we've had some minor discussions on it before. And so...
Let me go back and resurrect whatever the conversation was we had about that last time. I know one of the issues we had in the past is we want to do that. We like the idea. It's a gateway to the city. There was a property ownership issue with the parcel where we proposed looking at it. I honestly remember what else the conversation was, so I'll go back and...
Well, if it was delayed for the marketplace, it was a big problem for...
Well, it wasn't the marketplace. There's another owner that owns a very small sliver over there on the corner where 33rd and the, and the...
The right of the curve.
Right, yeah. So I don't remember if that was resolved, or we were still waiting for the overall plan or what the issue was, so I'll have to go back and look.
I think it's worth taking a look at because I think... I mean, basically, it needs to be some sort of relatively passive advertisement where it's not going to happen on a monthly basis.
Maybe we also could get some feedback on what you've had success with on 5,600 West. Does that work? Is it the right size? Remember, we had it smaller and then we enlarged it. Is that the right size to do it?
Okay.
Should it be bigger? Obviously, the bigger you go, the more expensive, but maybe we could kind of get some feedback on that as well, how well that's done there.
Okay.
Mayor, I think Councilwoman Lang may have a comment. She raised her hand. I just wanted to let you know.
Oh, yeah, I can see it there. Councilwoman Lang?
Yes, I just had a question as if we could look into, if we put the sign on 31, if it, I mean, on Redwood Road, if it could have a dual purpose to kind of feed into the performing arts facility and into the Cultural Center.
Yeah, absolutely. We can look into that, too. You're talking about 3,100 South and Redwood, right, that intersection?
Just anywhere on Redwood Road. I was just thinking Redwood instead of 33rd because we could maybe take advantage of both of those facilities instead of just shooting on one.
Okay.
That would be interesting.
Maybe. I think 33rd is going to be a lot more visible because there's not so much going on as there is on Redwood Road. There's already a lot to see. It's busy. I mean, all the businesses and everything. Certainly take a look at it. And maybe do both. I mean, I don't know. More the merrier, right?
Well, I would think that the primary location would be there on 33rd. Your secondary location would be on Redwood. And that may require interaction with an approval from the county because that's where the land is.
We might be able to talk to the bank that's right there on Redwood 31st, too. They've got a marquee out there. You know, at one point, they were talking with the COCO Center about putting some of their events on that marquee. Maybe resurrect that.
Okay. I'll look into all of those.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any others? I see no hands up, no microphones turned on electronically, so... Okay, council reports. I don't hear any. I will say also that there's no need for a closed session. So unless someone hurries and says something, we're done. I guess we're done.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Without objection, we will be adjourned. Hearing no objections, we are adjourned unanimously. Thank you all.